I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unharmed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any changes or amendments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve as is?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review of the November 22 regular meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open public comment to include the public comment on the draft local hazard mitigation plan. Is there any comments or questions regarding the hazard mitigation plan that could be raised? Hearing them, we will move on. Next, we have guests, Zion Growers, co-owners Robert and Travis. Welcome.
Evening, Zion Growers. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Good, good. So, my name is Brandon McFarlane and this gentleman next to me is Travis Samuels and so together we are Zion Growers. And Zion Growers is an industrial hemp manufacturing startup that originated out of St. Johnsbury. Basically, we are focusing on an old industrial mill building out of St. J. Locally there, it's known as the I building. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with your run through there. But the building, at least locally, is historic to the folks who live there and very important to them. And we've presented an opportunity to the town and to Mr. Ide, Mr. Timothy Ide, to repurpose his building to be an industrial hemp manufacturing facility. One of the reasons why we're here today is because we've spoken with several folks, including your town manager, as well as Ben Doyle from the Preservation Trust, who approached us at an event a few months ago where we were awarded tax credits from the state for our project in St. Johnsbury. And he asked if we would be interested in trying to apply our concept to your 52 main street property, which many of you know is your Marble Museum. So, we've had a few conversations over the past several months and this is my first time being able to come up here and look at it. I'm not from here. I actually live in Pittsburgh at the moment. But Travis is a local. Travis lives out of St. Johnsbury and has been here all his life. My connection to Vermont is I went to Norwich University and my family lives here. And so after kind of walking through the building, we think that it could be ideally suited for our second processing facility. We have been asked by members at the state if we plan on expanding and what our expansion plan is in the next several years. We didn't really have a building in mind or any specific place in mind, but the opportunity presented us with Ben here walking up to and asking us if we wanted to take a drive to Proctor. So, here we are. I've sent my business plan and kind of a general letter of interest that might address some concerns. I'm assuming everyone has had an opportunity to look at that. Great. And so really what we're here today for is to answer any questions that you might have, literally about anything, whether it's about us, whether it's about the building, whether it's about the town, and to see whether or not we could be a good fit for you and really see what it is that you would want from us, you know, were we to find a way to make this concept work. So, that being said, I'll deal with anybody's questions.
Does any of the board have questions?
We're glad you're interested in the property.
Thank you.
Yes.
And your information that you sent us is very thorough.
Absolutely.
Yeah, very, yeah.
Yes, very good.
Thank you.
Very thorough. How long have you been up in St. Johnsbury at the...
Well, Travis has lived there all his life. He actually lives slightly outside of Barnett. He went to the academy there in St. Johnsbury. I have four other cousins who my uncle's had. And he's an immigrant from Jamaica, but my Aunt Shelley, she's what, like a fourth or fifth generation owner?
Fourth.
Yeah, so I'm sure it's probably the same here, but in St. J, there's like legacy families, you know? And the Ides is one of them. So, Mr. Timothy Ide is a seventh generation. He has great grandchildren. So, there's like 11 generations of this gentleman, like, you know, walking around there. So, but that area is important to me just because my family lives there. That's where they're from. That's where Travis wants to be. It's where he wants to raise his family and settle down. So, it holds a special place into my heart. I'm not originally from Vermont. I'm actually from Florida. And like I said, I went to college up here. I didn't know I had family up here until I came here and they were like, "Hey, surprise."
Surprise.
Would have been nice to know, I don't know, when I was born, but that's not what happened. But, you know, since then, you know, Travis is like a brother to me and my uncle's like a father to me. So, it's really where we started.
Yeah. How long have you been operating the facility in St. Johnsbury?
So, the facility's not operational yet. We are closing on the facility on the 23rd of this month. And we will be breaking ground on the facility in May. So, ideally, we'll be operational during our harvest season next year around September timeframe.
Are you thinking of leasing or purchasing or...
The ultimate goal is that we take on ownership of the property. So, our business model is kind of like a two-pronged model. So, obviously, we have the industrial hemp manufacturing side, but we also have the real estate management side. A little bit about my background, I'm a real estate attorney and I've been in construction since I was 14 years old. Know all about project management and construction management. We both have an adept background in business, landlord and leasing. We have some properties we're own that Travis manages in St. Johnsbury. So, our understanding from the Preservation Trust is that's not the business they're in. They're not landlords. They're not holders of real estate. And there's a couple of projects that they have to do on the property that I'm sure you're all familiar with, but that's also not, you know, up their alley. They're not project managers, construction managers. So, I brought along with me today, when we looked through the building, our architect and our construction manager, Nigley Chase. I'm not sure if you're familiar with him at all, but they've done a lot of higher-profile construction projects throughout the state. One of their most recent ones is the distillery outside of Montpelier. So, they're very thorough and very good at what they do. And so, they're going to take over a lot of these ancillary construction projects and try to make it into like a holistic project for you.
No, it's, uh, sounds very interesting and we certainly would like to see something, you know, that whole piece, that whole piece of property, things happening.
We would. I will say it's a lot larger than I thought it was going to be.
[laughing]
It's like Travis said, a football field. I was like, uh, you know.
I got under...
Yeah, so it will definitely be like a multi-year project. It will definitely be phased in, but it'll definitely get done once, you know, all the different players involved, like, there's a lot of different layers, a lot of complexity to have to work through. So, that upfront kind of pre-construction planning and development is going to take several months, but it'll happen.
So, it seems like... Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna, do you, is this going to be a drying facility? And also, what products are you going to make? I didn't see your business plan. Sorry, I was just curious.
Sure. Yeah, I can give a generalized answer. So, the facility won't be so much focused on drying. Really, what happens, most of the drying for your product for industrial hemp happens in the field. So, to give you like a basic idea, is you grow it, they cut it down and it goes through a process called redding, which it sets in the field and starts to break down to get like a hay texture or color. And most of the drying is done there. So, really, our facility is mostly centered around storage and processing. And that's really all that'll be going on there.
Okay. But what are the products?
So, it'll be herd and fiber. So, the fiber is just, you know, the outer, it encompasses the herd, which is the woody core. It's actually a hollow plant, but it mostly resembles wood chips, really. So, it's, you have your wood chips, your inner piece, and then your fiber that runs along the outside of the stem.
What's, like, what's the market for that? So, take that and use it for like construction or for anything or what?
Well, there's a lot of things, but construction is actually one of them. So, kind of the, it's a burgeoning market. So, you see, animal bedding is one thing, construction materials, press board. You also have insulation. Those are just some materials for building, but you also have animal bedding for stables, horses, smaller animals. It's another thing. There's plastics you can make. And, you know, there's a wide variety of things that haven't even been really gotten into yet that are kind of ever-growing. But the main things most people using for right now are animal bedding and construction materials. And most of that is actually stuff that comes from outside the country. So, a more localized source of product is something most people are actually looking for.
But you'd be sourcing from local farmers, like from Vermont farmers?
Yep. Our idea, a large part of why we built the way we built is because I'm from a farming community and dairy in Caledonia County is something that's been hit drastically over the last 10 years. I think that the numbers are about half of the dairy farms in the state have closed over the last 10 years. So, finding a way for farmers to be able to use their land in a way that doesn't have to have them either, you know, use it just for hay as something more that's a more sustainable economic crop for them as opposed to, "We're just going to hay because we need to pay the taxes." And even at a point where you're just doing hay, there, people aren't really paying their taxes and they're not really making any kind of end. So, the idea is that, you know, this can be something that works as, you know, a rotational crop or something like that, but it also puts money back into their pockets at the same time. So, they're not just kind of spinning their wheels.
Okay. You have great questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, as you can kind of see, hemp questions, I'm your guy. If anything you want to know, that's, that's what...
Well, I think it's great because I feel like you have the support of other development agencies and the museum itself. I think it'd be a great asset to the town. We've had such vacancies over there for years that it's just a sore spot, you know? And it'd be great to see something that can grow too.
And it's much like what we're doing in St. Johnsbury, where we have a building that's been kind of idly sitting and has like a couple tenants, but it hasn't really found a use. And it's right in the middle of downtown. So, it's something that, you know, to just demolish it would just leave a hole in the community. And that's really something we don't want to see.
So, the finished product that goes out of here, does that go out in a bulk truck or...
Yeah, you can sell it really to wholesale buyers. You can go out in larger, what we call super sacks. For our ends, it's like 2,000 pound bags. But you can also do it in smaller compressed bags, which is something that's a little more common for animal bedding. But really, either or is really what you're working with, obviously for construction materials.
Sure.
Well, I know your bottom line's profit, but I really appreciate you taking time to build a little bit of social capital with us. And you've been great to work with so far. I'll just continue to act as the liaison for the town and the select board and the community. So, if you need absolutely anything, if you need any information, if you want me to put information out, just continue to kind of keep reaching out. And I look forward to the partnership. Continue forward.
Okay. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
Bob Stein, oldest road and oldest disclosure on the Marble Museum Board. So, maybe someone here, maybe it's PTV Preservation Trust, or maybe you guys, where that museum might fit in your...
I'll take that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm Ben Doyle. I'm the president of the Preservation Trust. It's nice to see you again. We know we've met before in person. And I think Lawrence and I spoke with you, I believe in February, when there were some questions about the museum and what was happening with the building. And I think you'll remember at that time, I said, "To be honest, we don't know." But, you know, that we were going to work really hard on two things. One, to help the museum succeed in telling the story of this important industry in place. And then also to try and find a kind of what we thought of as an anchor tenant for the building that could help it be sustainable economically. And so, that's, you know, we haven't been sitting idle since that conversation. We've been working hard, hitting the pavement, trying to, you know, talking to a lot of different folks about a lot of different possibilities. And I think, I remember distinctly in our last meeting, said, "When we felt like there was a viable partner that was emerging, that we would bring it to you." So, I want to emphasize, this is, Brandon and Travis have been fantastic. This is not a done deal, right? This is part of the due diligence that we're all doing. And, you know, a big question for us is the museum, right? That people, folks have worked so hard to preserve that important part of Proctor, you know? And I know how important it is to so many people. And at the Preservation Trust, we got involved, you know, over a decade ago. My predecessor said, "This is something that has to be saved, not just for Proctor, not just for Vermont, but for the country." And so, we really still believe in the value of the museum and of the collections. And one of the things that's most exciting about this potential partnership is their flexibility and really enthusiasm for the museum continuing to have a presence in that building. And, you know, the actual square footage, what the displays look like, we don't know yet. But I think the clear thing is, is that we see a path for a sustainable presence for the Marble Museum, where the museum doesn't have to be the anchor tenant that drives all the economic activity of the building because frankly, that's too heavy of a lift, right? But it's a way that, you know, again, it's a long road ahead of us. There's a lot of things, a lot of due diligence, a lot of steps. But if it could go well, it could be a really good thing. And so, I guess I just want to say that like, we see a future for the museum in that building. And if this doesn't work, we're going to continue to work with the Marble Museum to try and find a sustainable path for them. The board is meeting regularly and really have stuck with it to try and find that path. So, I just want you to know that our goal here is not the return on financial investment. Our goal is for something positive to happen in this community and for an important story to be told. And we really hear you with what your values are and what your concerns are. And we're trying to be as responsive as possible. And I just finally want to say, we all enjoyed working with Stan. Mike is fantastic.
[laughing]
I really like Stan. But Mike has just brought, from the first, you know, he proactively reached out to me to introduce himself, you know, immediately was like, "Let's set up a meeting." I don't even know how many times we've met in the past two months, but he's just been really great and has brought a lot of really good energy to this relationship. And I appreciate that.
[laughing]
Yeah.
I'm Bob Young, resident of this town. And I'm also the chairman of the Vermont Marble Museum Board of Directors. And as you all know, the museum has not been open for the last two years. Part of that, of course, is COVID-related. The other part is that we realized that the, in fact, the economic model that that museum has run on for 50 years is no longer a viable one. And we felt that what we had to do was shut down and rethink and restructure a different kind of museum for a different kind of work. The days when the hems were there and before that, when you had, you know, 100 buses going through Proctor every summer, those days no longer exist. People don't travel by bus anymore. So, we've been, I spent a lot of time with the trust, rethinking what might be a model for the museum that would work for the 21st century. We've made great progress. We're not finished yet, but we're on a good path. And it is our hope that we will open the museum again this summer, even if it's only for two or three months. But it would be a museum that would certainly be welcome and open to guests and a lot of the same exhibits that are probably still there, but doing some things that haven't been done before in terms of virtual, a virtual museum and programming. And so, we're thinking all of that through. We hope to be open. And we sent the town a letter expressing our interest and support for the Zion people. And we hope that that works because having a stable building, a viable building is absolutely critical to us. As Ben said, we cannot support that building unattractive. So, we're, we hope this works. And we certainly hope to be open and active again in Proctor sooner rather than later. So, thank you.
Fantastic.
Does anybody else?
Yeah. So, I wanted to follow, Lawrence Miller, consultant at Preservation Trust from Montpelier, did want to make two follow-up comments from our prior meeting as well. Because I know the Hems property has been a source of concern and was discussed at our last meeting that I attended. And so, we have been continuing to work with the railroad. We've secured preliminary funding from the Amtrak Safety Program to take away Building 29A, which is that single-story stub out here, which would provide continued guaranteed access to the back lot. So, potential for the redevelopment of that building. And we have been letting the Hems know of the progress with Zion and talking to them about possibly their participation or their property's participation in a full plan for redevelopment of that parcel together with this one. No idea how that might come off, but I did want to let you know that we are actively working towards including that in the long-term plan so that that doesn't sit there and continue to tete your rear right center of town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Lyle?
Lyle Jefferson, Chamber of Health Development, with Tyler Richardson, our operations director. Just spent a good three hours walking around the building and that is an experience.
[laughing]
We got into, I would say, the bowels of the building and scared these two gentlemen away, which was nice. While I was on that tour, it was exciting to see, my gray hair and my beard loves to say, "Young enthusiasm." I think that the two gentlemen here are bringing great young enthusiasm and a lot of energy. What I heard though that really interested me the most was, as a lifelong Vermonter, they are very community-focused and they talk a lot about the museum. And to me, that was important to hear as we were walking around. And that they're agricultural-based. That's important to me too. And the building is wicked big. You say, "Wow, it's a football field." It's true. So, we'll work as actively with them as they would like to, also help fill that space with other light manufacturers. The people I may have said here when I was here are talking about regional marketing. And we have had people come to us saying that they need space and that they are ready to grow. And hopefully, this will be the space and place they could grow the Zion Growers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you guys for coming.
Please be happy.
Thank you so much.
Keep us informed.
We'll do this.
Okay. Next on is good stuff. I just want to mention, I don't know if Michael is going to, too, about Friday night, we had the Christmas tree lighting in the park. And there was probably, we think, 60 people there between the park and the library after. So, we did caroling, went to the library. There were, Santa Claus was there. And there was gifts given out to all the kids and cookies, hot chocolate, crafts. It was a huge turnout. The library was packed downstairs. So, I just want to thank our yard and Michael and the town for supporting us for that. So, it was really good. Judy Turnovich contributed Santa as well as some of the bags, all the bags and some of the gifts inside. So, it was a good night. John's been lighting the tree ever since, haven't you, John?
Oh, yeah. You shut the tree out, somebody else turned it on.
And there was a basketball tournament too, right?
Yes, the boys won that.
For the first time.
Yes. So, that's a...
Bobby, in addition.
Yeah. Was Bob A. there?
I don't know who.
Yes.
Yeah.
Both can I quickly?
Good.
Hey, Highway Department, Highway Budget Review.
So, this is the only department that we skipped inside of the general fund three weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our Public Works Forum in John Forest is here to guide us along. But in front of you, you have my proposed draft budget for the Highway Fund. And I don't have anything to comment towards it. I don't think, John, did you have any revisions you wanted to make or...
No.
The, your, the big cost savings here was labor, which may be a good thing because we'll get to it later on the meeting. But I had a webinar on the IIJA, the Infrastructure Improvement, ooh, it's in the, Infrastructure Improvement and Jobs Act. So, that will come to us in the form of competitive grants, but there is going to be money there for localities to improve their infrastructure, including highways.
Yeah.
Yes. The technology.
Mm-hmm. So, if we're saving any money in highway, it means we can put more towards a match, which I'm sure will be required when it comes to it.
I think it's great. I mean, it's gone down, Travis. And the things that go up are things we have no control over.
Correct.
We haven't heard anything, any grumblings or things out there as far as their Class 2 paving?
No.
No, no.
We'll put in for a first of the year, we'll put in for smittle or...
Yeah.
We've got...
Yes, because they haven't given out anything for, what, two years?
We had one, yeah, I say, yeah, they haven't done anything in two years. They were supposed to have done something in 2020, but with everything that went on, there was a bunch of stuff that we were going to get, everybody was going to get a certain amount. And we found out that we weren't getting any this year. And we were, we submitted for earlier this year and the last year. And the last time we got one was when 2018, we paved Cross Street, School Street, Fourth Street, and by the way.
Right.
I don't have a problem with it.
Motion to approve it?
We have to do the whole budget.
Oh, we do in categories as well. We do. Yeah, we do it every year and I want it.
I mean, I looked at everything, but sometimes I need...
Well, it's a little behind.
All right. So, business plan?
Can you just say what the number is?
The Highway Department?
The bottom line?
That's down.
And that's down.
Down almost 10,000, down 9,500.
Yeah.
Actually, I did have one thing that I did find. We, for this year, we've gone down from last year, $75,000 for salt, blades and all that, down to $67,000. You never know what's going to happen. Last year, I was over 100 tons. The year before, I was over 150 tons. And the year before that, I was under. And I hate to, you know, short-change that because I never know, never know what's going to happen.
No.
You know, we have, might have a mild year, very, roll it over. We might have a bad year and then we're pulling from somewhere else. But that was another thing I saw.
What would you like to see in that?
Well, I'd like to keep, at least keep it at the 75. We're down, it's a $7,000 difference.
Yeah.
I'd rather it be high and then we just roll it back with the general fund. If we don't use it, then have to find it from somewhere else. And I think it's just, it's almost $8,000.
Yeah, because you had some salt left over from prior, so, so that, that's a good thing.
I just hate to see that, that, our, just go, you know, go down.
Yeah. So, we end up with a bare salt shed. It'd be nice to have that little cushion.
Well, like I said, it was, yeah.
Do we want to go back up to 75?
The only, I definitely think it's fair to provide that kind of cushion for you. I was being, I was definitely just going to buy the numbers on this one without kind of giving that safety net. I don't think it's a bad idea. The only thing you have to think about is if it will increase your overall general fund total.
It's still under even if we keep it at the 75?
Yeah.
Well, your highway is.
Yeah.
That's what I mean. The highway's still under from last year if we raise it to 75.
It's basically 68, as it is.
So, the total I got at the end is $463,606. So, the total I got at the end is four hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars and twelve cents.
Would be increased?
Yeah.
Four, six, three, six, one, three, six, one, six?
Yeah.
Twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Don't raise it on us, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it, man.
All right. What?
That's the other, the South Street.
Oh, it doesn't, not on this one.
Oh, yeah, that's not in my answer. So, I would be, this is, this is one of my bigger project updates, and please know when I'm giving the project updates, I'm doing my best in summing up all the information I'm getting from the professional engineers. So, if we got a question I can't answer, I'll just pump and get back to you. So, South Street update is, the project is running really close to schedule, which is good news. Conceptual plans and cost estimates for construction have been drafted and sent to the Proctor South Street Sidewalk Committee, which Bruce is a member on, and we reviewed that. Once these plans have been approved, so our project manager has also reviewed these plans and sent them back to Dufrane Group, who's our design engineers. The plans will be sent to V-Trans for a year-long review. Now, and Bruce had a few comments, and I'll get to it later. One of the, so when you're looking at projects and business plans, whatever, you got your strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats, and one of the threats to this project is traffic, traffic control and flagging, which eats up a lot of the, the cost of the project. And that was something Bruce called out, and we thought it was important that we've got a good pedestrian plan for the kids going back and forth to the pool when it rains and home, right?
Yeah.
So, so that's been heard. A few things that'll be looked over in the review is that there has to be a five-foot vegetated strip between sidewalk and the road, which requires some of the sidewalk to be pushed back from where it is now. If this is the case, the project could enter an area that requires a Phase 1B archaeological review. However, the engineering archaeological review consultant stated that they did not identify this area as sensitive, and they felt that V-drop, V-dot would come to the same conclusion, but they just don't know that for a fact. And the other thing that we're at the mercy of V-Trans is that the, the project scope may be in a sensitive area since it's so close to Otter Creek, but we just won't know that until after near the end of the review. So, that's my South Street Sidewalk project update.
The five-foot greenbelt is a state requirement.
If there's no curb.
That's not too bad down there, but on this, the upper end.
Up on the church, and that's where.
It's going to be a big issue.
Yeah, and that's, and that's where they were worried that there'd have to be some kind of, they were getting into that archaeologically sensitive area, but, but again, they just wanted to present the fact to us that it, it could be sensitive, but it probably isn't. But we just won't know until after the review.
It's amazing that.
John, do you find any arrowheads out there? Know what to do with them? Okay.
But it's been a great project team. The committee's been really responsive, and, and DuBois and King, who's our project manager, reviewed the plans and sent very detailed questions back to Dufrane Group. And, and before we started our meeting, I got an email from Dufrane Group with the updates, with the revisions from the requests of DuBois and King.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you, Bruce.
Is there a motion to go to the Board of Water Commissioners?
Both.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Okay, first on is 109 Deer Lane.
Okay, yeah, John, you gotta help me out with this one. You got the facts. Pre-dates me.
When I came on board in 2017, there was discussion about the property, and we were going into doing water shut-offs and this and that. And in 2018, when, I think it was 2018, that Cossey Carpenter purchased the TNT building, had to go down and turn the water off because the water didn't shut off, so it was winterized. While we were there, turning on the water to the water, the TNT tractor, we found a curb stop that went out to 109 Deer Lane, and thought that that was the one for the TNT tractor, when a few minutes later, we found the other one for TNT, and the one for 109 was off. It had been off whenever they had shut it off. Did not go into the building until, I think, August of this summer. I think it was August 5th, I went in there, and they had had their plumber come in and disconnect inside. I know for a fact that the one was been off, had a curb stop out at the road since 2018, early spring and summer, when, when we went to turn on Cossey Carpenter. And staying happy this summer, go in, go get ahold of Hillary and Steve, and they got a lead, we went in, and they got a disconnected, I have pictures of it, it's disconnected cut gap inside the basement.
So, that was 2018 of that year?
That was 2018, it was shut off. It was cut and capped three months ago, inside the building.
Okay.
And it was always, my understanding is that they wanted it cut and capped out at the main line, and they didn't want to dig up, bend, grab Beverly's lawn and have to do a burr, because there was blade of grass. That was cool, Steve, and Adam, he didn't want, didn't want to have the, you know, you know, get a piece of grass out of things, so we left it at that. And that's the way it was left until.
Because wasn't one of those shut-offs really close to the edge of the road?
Yeah, they're both, yeah, they're, well, yeah, they're both about, I'm going to say they're twenty-five feet away from the, from the road.
Yeah.
They're, they're closer to the, the water line is like ten feet off, I believe, off the edge of the road, and then you go to the curb stop, and then back off that curb stop, there's the two curb stops, one's tied in before the curb stop going to TNT, the other one is tied in before that, it goes out to, and it was off in 2018, when I turned on it.
I think that was a big question. Oh, that other water.
She references 2016.
That may have been when they originally shut it off. I, I wasn't here at that point, at that time, so.
So, is this outstanding invoice or bill?
Well, I think it's, and I believe it's continued to go up.
But what, is it from 2000, like, when did it start? I'm guessing it's past due.
Yeah, and it's, and building insurance is well outweighed.
Interesting.
Insurance.
And she's been seeing the bill, huh? Correct?
Right.
It was literally disconnected from Otter Street, and it says, John said, Hillary
and Steve both came to meeting, and the disconnect for them to cap and cut the pipe, they had to be on the back of this property, and at the time, she wasn't giving them permission to do that, and they didn't want to go. I mean, it has to be recorded someplace, because I know they both came to one meeting, and Hillary came to at least one meeting by herself, so they, they had dumped the well, and they wanted the letter to say that they were no longer on the system. So, 2016 was when we were doing all Otter Street disconnects.
Yeah. Should've been pretty much done by then, because we switched over to the well in '14.
Right.
So, everybody should've been, everybody up to the farmhouse should've been already up and on their own well.
So, it sounds to me from the letter is that they've been billed for all this stuff, haven't been paying it, so we're not getting anything back. We're just forgiving.
So, they haven't been paying, so?
No.
I don't, it does, by, it sounded like a letter, I don't think so.
Right.
I'm making a motion, we forgive this. I'll second that.
Ball favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. It'd be nice to have a, a final, to know what the exact amount would, that we're forgiving.
I can, yeah, I can, that could be on that.
Yeah, we can get it on that.
Oh, we can pick, yeah, that's easy stuff to figure out. Oh, yeah, we can get that. It just, there was so much history to it, it was scary for me to even ask any questions because it was just a lie.
Sure. Okay, Water Department Budget Review.
Again, it's not the increases, the first stuff we can't control.
Yeah, a lot of this just had to do with, with stacking. That's where a few big costs came from. And then, you know, diesel, gas, and oil went up.
Six thousand dollars or?
It's not, it's not that big of an increase.
No. No, when you look at the, the total, yeah.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, with last year's budget, the whole idea of switching over to us doing water and sewers is saving money on labor, and that's gone up. So, I was just curious about that. That was part of the intent of moving over?
Yes. Your contractors will pay quite a bit more than.
I looked at some of the old budgets, and those numbers were pretty high, but I didn't do a full comparison.
But wasn't this year's budget based on the savings that we would get from moving in time? I think it was.
This year coming?
But this will be your twenty-one. No, this will be your twenty.
And, and also think, too, highway and sewer and water are kind of weird, because you've got to allocate the time appropriately, so the cost of labor did go way down in the highway, but they had to go up here, and it was just the way that the labor had to be distributed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before then, we were paying any of those, or paying sidings.
Yeah, so, you know, your two floaters to John, and then your two operators are your kind of, I think, the policy we take, and the informal policies we take, and it's their public works, but accounting-wise, it's that John, his two operators are the highway manager, and what have you, and then the floaters primarily stick to water and sewer.
So, even if you add up the increase for labor for sewer and water, it's still less than the decrease for labor for highway.
All right.
Okay, share with the numbers. Six hundred and sixty.
Sorry.
Come on, Lisa, yeah.
Four hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred nineteen point oh-two.
And that is an increase from?
It's an increase.
Four hundred and four, seven eighty-seven. Yep, six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and two cents.
All right. Is there a motion to go out to Water Commissioners and then to the Sewage Commissioners?
Both. Second.
Ball favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Sewer Budget.
No, that's the best guy. You happy, John?
Yeah.
Any questions? Somebody do with us?
Okay, Lucy, one total? Sure.
Oh.
Are you getting it, sir?
Yeah.
Well, other people probably.
Well, that's a lame excuse, but I ran out of legal paper, I was going to print more out.
It's three hundred forty thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars.
Zero.
Zero change.
And the increase from?
Zero.
Zero increase.
Zero change, it was the same last year.
All right. A motion to go out to Sewage Commissioners, back to the regular meeting.
So, move.
Wait, do we have emergency repairs to Stiles' notes?
Oh.
No, I, I was.
Styles' men.
I think, because, right?
Yeah, I, I was being a bit picky this time, where normally I put South Street under my manager's report, but I thought, well, it's kind of highway, it's up under highway. I'm just trying to create kind of an internal policy for myself, I'll create these agendas. You might just be making confusions.
I know I saw it somewhere around here. I can't see it.
It, it, it is on there.
Yeah, okay.
It's in the manager's report.
Okay.
So, manager's report.
So, the legal services, the request for proposals is still out, I can't say much towards it, since we're still in the solicitation portion of the timeline, but proposals will due by Wednesday, and I'll have them for you at our next select for meeting to review. Willow Sewer Project Update, see, here's something I could have gone under Sewer Commissioners, but it's kind of a manager's thing, too. Anyway, the project is moving along nicely, I've been in contact with almost every landowner about easements, and currently working with the engineers and landowners on securing a stream alteration permit. There's a little kind of stream that runs into a marble culvert down there. There won't be serious impact to it, it's just kind of, just a step that we feel we need to take to cover the bases, so. Two landowners are signing that, one's Tom Doty, and the, or reviewing the permit, and Tom Doty and Mr. Leftbridge. See, I haven't shared, no, I haven't shared these paths. Okay, so, soil test results came back, and unfortunately, they, they were measured at the worst-case scenario. Due to high PAH concentration in all the samples, and I'm not a soil scientist, so I'm going to reiterate that I'm, I may not be an expert on this subject, but can get back to you if any questions. So, now what has to happen is, there has to be more coordination with DEC and with the construction contractor who has to dispose of it. A soil management plan has to be drafted. I'm currently waiting on cost estimates and a memo from BHB to kind of give us a little bit more guidance on what this looks like moving forward, and have asked them to be at our next select for meeting to give us that picture.
Can I ask you a question? This is just alkaline soil you're talking about, this is dirt's alkaline?
PAHs. I did know what that was.
Okay, P eight, oh, it's like a, oh, it's, it's a pH.
Which they weren't, yeah, so.
Okay.
You know, and that's unfortunate, because some of our bore prep grant application was kind of, was planning for that to get done, so there's, you know, a lot of moving pieces on that.
There's been a lot of filling down the quarry property where our path is planned to go. Samples were taken before the filling?
Yeah, I think, well, so, PAHs were found through the entire scope of the project, so all the way down to where the railroad is.
Yeah, down here.
So, and they were taking, soil samples were taken, I'd say, a month ago. But I'm working, I'm working with it.
Yeah, when we find out whether there's a label turns, would you mind sending it up to us?
I've asked for updated schedules, updated cost values, memos, and so they, they know we're on it.
I think it's oil, it was, well, recycled aromatic hydrocarbons, so it's from the train. So it's from the train.
Thank you.
It's a lot of the oil.
Yeah, a lot of the oil from the old engine building up there.
I was thinking it's from the trestles themselves, the wooden trestles.
It's all in town.
An environmental.
Yeah, yeah.
If they just put on road, keep the dust down.
All right, so budget prep. As you know, I've continued working with outside stakeholders and partnering heads on finalizing the FY twenty-three budget. And I'm grateful for the positive feedback that's been received about formatting of my draft. I added page numbers to the chocolate corner. And Stan is also a big help. So, and, and I appreciate him being there whenever, whenever I needed him to gain that institutional knowledge I needed to, to put some of these numbers together. Uh, Virginia Outdoor Recreation Grants submitted.
Vermont.
Yeah.
Oh. These are long days for me.
We get this fund and we better not see it.
So, uh, so in your package, you've got a portion of the town's application. Lisa Meiser and Dale Christie are responsible for the maps and the strategic plan. While I spearheaded the narrative and finer administrative work. The grants ranking committee met today to start review. And the town should know something about our applications by January tenth. The only thing that we were behind on submitting was a Act two fifty variance. We weren't the only ones that didn't have that in on time. So I got that to him before the deadline. And so today I actually received feedback that ND Town, the town proctor submitted a full application. So we should be good to get it through. Emergency operations due to power outage. Not sure if you were aware, but Proctor lost power during our personal event of the year. I got a good snapshot on my phone of everybody in the area having power except for this little red spot called Proctor. Our emergency management coordinator and fire chief took charge and opened up a shelter for residents where they could warm up and grab some food. Thanks to all the volunteers that helped out and the strong leadership shown by our emergency management crews. I, you know, I was at home ready to come in, but Kevin Blonge and Joshua were just on top of it. And when I did come in was when I started getting worried that we were going to have to set up an everybody's shelter. But by the time I got here, the power came back. They thought maybe I was hanging out with Wes Rutland.
Coming for glory, yeah.
So, um.
Innocent.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank, thank for your work.
Uh, now on a more somber note, Styles Meadow Pump Station was affected negatively by the storm. And it's, it's functional, but only with temporary repairs. And John might be able to speak more towards this, but we've got contractors looking in to make the repairs permanent.
Yeah, I got hold of Chandler when it happened. You know, what happened is they blew up, when they put it back together, they had an issue. Two poles out from the pump station with some ice or insulators and it shut off. And I'm assuming at the time of the power outage is when it, there was a spike and it blew out the, all of the control, the control panel in the, or the controller.
In the station, yeah.
And it blew out, it blew out one of the transformers. So I had to have anyone come in and pump, um, pump down three days until we got it operational. There did have some high, high flows, but nothing that ever got to or, or went into the field down there. But we got it operational on, that was Saturday, that, I'm assuming four AM. And we got it back operational, fully operational, uh, well, temporarily, about two o'clock on Monday. And it's been working fine since. I've got to get ahold of the call Chandler and discuss a couple of things with them. We're talking about those and the whole panel. And I'm hoping that most of the panel is there and still working. It's just the controller, they got to, they put a timer on the controller and I'm hoping that maybe they can just move that controller and put it into the panel and then get my, my switches, hand switches, they've been working. They're out there, I'll, but, uh, put it, submit it to the V L T C.
Insurance.
Insurance, insurance claim. And Michael and I are working on getting pictures and information for them to go on in there. I'm hoping middle of next month or by the end of this month or middle of next month, we'll be back there and fully operational.
Good.
Back in.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thanks.
That must have been a lot of work.
It was, it was a long, four day, it started out, it started out on Wednesday with a sewer backup on Warner Ave. Then for Thanksgiving night, I had to come out on Grove Street from the Warner Ave, plug the, clean out a sewer bog at McDonald's. And then, you know, I'm getting prepped for the rain, whatever was coming in Friday. And then luckily Kyle was around. I had two guys on vacation. They were out deer hunting. And one guy, I didn't realize, he told me on Wednesday that he was going to Massachusetts, so. But wasn't it, I was not expecting this storm.
Right.
Nope, he was expecting one.
No.
So it was supposed to be one of three inches, not a big deal. One snapped. Some of these things change. We got through it.
It's good.
And I'm starting to catch up on my sleep.
Thanks, John.
Anything to add about the power outage before I head on?
The only thing that I heard, you know, everybody appreciated the, uh, the fire station and, and Kevin and Josh. But the only thing was, you know, no bathrooms.
No bathrooms.
And I think that's just because they're short of space downstairs to, to do something. We'll buy a smaller fire truck next time.
Put me on additional.
Well, I, I've been talking to him about, you know, maybe one day looking at making a building ADA compliant, but.
Yeah.
It's, it'd be, it'd be quite an investment.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's, you know, it's too bad that, you know, we've got the two schools, but no generator. Yeah. I'm surprised we let pass the, the plan without somebody.
Well.
Pointing, you know, really.
Yeah. All right, well, R C S W D, which I believe is the Rutland County Solid Waste District. Terry Doherty wanted me to pass on this report that, um, in your, and included in your packets, that hazard waste dates for calendar year twenty twenty-two will be on May seventh and September tenth. I'll, if we get closer to those dates, I'll update the website that everybody knows works at and the exact time. Uh, she added that the R C S W D has updated their website and social media pages to provide users with more helpful information as well as permitting guidance. Please see the R C S W D website if you'd like more information on their activities. And lastly, Vermont leads the cities and towns have a webinar on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. We got out of the A A S focus just a little bit earlier in the meeting. But, uh, you know, most people like to talk about highway. They want to see whether we get our roads paved or not. And the update that we got is that Vermont is intended to receive one point six billion dollars on highway funding over the next five years. Uh, these funds will most likely be accessible through competitive grants for roads, bridges, rail projects, and pedestrian foot paths. There are twenty more competitive grants than there were last year. So, um, more guidance will come, um, after the continuing resolution at the federal level on February eighteenth. And that concludes my manager's report.
Okay. Oh, review of the bills. Everybody had questions on that?
No.
Jurors' report.
Yeah, I thought it was really complete.
Yes, very detailed.
Yes. I don't think we've seen one that.
In a while, no.
No.
And they're issuing more tickets.
Yep.
So I should help with speed and other things.
Yep.
And very detailed on their responses and, um.
Yeah.
And what their actions were, so.
You know, I've heard some things about speeding on the, you know, West Proctor Road, but I was glad to see any time that they'd been out of there, they weren't really that bad.
Yeah.
On, on numbers, yeah.
No speeding on our street, our street.
What's that?
Don't let them catch an edge.
A little slow. A little standing down.
All right, general fund budget review, some old business.
I, I can handle most of these. And this came straight from Stan. And we'll start with clarifying mosquito costs, because that's the question that left. They were, so Stan was playing catch-up on some fees that were due and hadn't been, I think there was just a billing invoicing error. So from everything I can tell, uh, the actual cost for FY twenty-three was fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Unless you all have seen otherwise.
No.
Okay.
No, that's what they budgeted.
So moving on to listers, Lisa Wright will, uh, speak more towards this. I'm not sure if she's on Zoom yet, but she was gonna, yeah, she was gonna join us via Zoom and go over her, her contract and what that would look like in our FY twenty-three budget. And then, um, this, this one equal was next. And I have altered the original budget to, which, which did downscale it a good bit. And, uh, and you've seen my, my opinion on that. So if anyone would like to ask me questions or the pool directors here, you can ask the pool direction questions. And the ball's in your court on that one.
So we're down from seven days to five days?
Uh, that's, yes.
That seems a little more realistic, yes.
I think with just the challenges that the pool faces and the input it requires, I think it would be good to kind of get their results driven, you know, to where it's, and that's just my opinion.
So in, in our packet, the new budget, is that, that reflects the move to five days?
That reflects the move to five days, yes. So it was, gosh, I forgot what it was when I was, it was closer to a ten thousand dollar increase.
Yes.
Yeah, and now we're at three thousand. So what I've done is added an extra bit of labor to cover, um, for what I would think would cover the cost of extra staff to facilitate larger groups and then provide the training that the pool director might need. And, and if that isn't, you know, we're not establishing pool policy or pool management at this meeting. We're simply kind of talking about the budget. So that additional three thousand in and of itself kind of creates a, a pad for us to, to achieve some of the goals that the pool director has expressed.
So the total budget increase is all three thousand?
That's what's proposed here.
Does anybody have any other questions?
What days are the pool going to be open then?
I, I, just with everything going on and we're so, we're not close to the summer season yet.
Yeah.
I kind of hadn't worked out those finer details with the director. I think we'll get there for sure. But yeah, as of right now, I'm just kind of charging through with, um, what's the overall goal that the town has for the pool? And set the budget on that and then hash out finer details when we get closer to warm weather.
Yeah.
Just in the future, could we see, uh, the dollars coming in from tapestry and the ticket sales, the pass sales? Doesn't show anything now.
We, we didn't do any passes last year at all.
Okay.
I know, I don't believe we've done those for a couple of years. The year before was COVID, so I don't, we didn't do any passes for that.
You don't charge out of founders?
We're, we're trying to add it to the plan, but we, last year we didn't, we didn't have a plan for that.
So this year, going for it, because it's nothing in here, I know, Tommy, you asked about like tapestry, so there's, it'll be part of the pool, it's just not.
I've, in, so what I've done under direct labor, you'll see in the notes, I've got open five days a week, extra staff included to facilitate.
Okay, okay.
So that's kind of where the actual cost, they need an extra body there to keep everybody safe.
Okay. Can I ask how many you were planning to have on Saturday?
I imagine just an additional lifeguard would be enough to handle tapestry.
An addition for the pillow set roster?
Well, how it's been set up for, yeah, a long time. Just the feedback I've gotten is that, uh, tapestry's been there for a long time. So I definitely want to continue that. So by even adding one more body there, we're improving, or we're making it more secure.
I just, I don't know what how many bodies you were putting in the first place. I don't like this. I don't have any of that information.
Oh, well, I based this, this number, um, this FY twenty-three number is based off of what you sent me for the five day.
For the new to seven?
Yeah, and then I increased it a little bit more to include an extra lifeguard.
If we follow, if you follow the five day budget you had me create to present to you, or the six or seven day budget we had included for you, if we follow that and that fits in, that already has the extra volume in there. That's that leadership that we've tried to discuss.
And then I added, yeah, I saw the flavor in there. But just to make sure that we can facilitate tapestry, the amount of days that, that I would like seeing done, I put that on top to kind of add a little bit of cushion.
And tapestry is something that we can discuss when springtime comes around and we find out if we have stuff and the tapestry is even going to house in our program? Because right now we don't know if we're going to.
Yeah.
That's something that can be discussed later, not springtime.
Oh, that sort of thing.
If tapestry requires an extra lifeguard, why doesn't the school pay for that? Why doesn't the tapestry program pay for that card?
I'm sure it's something that, well, I've never managed a pool before, so. I'm sorry, and Tom, yeah, and I guess that was just a long portion of me saying, I'm sure it could be done.
Oh, couldn't it?
Well, I don't see a reason why it couldn't be done. But I guess they have to be qualified and.
And, and the restrictions are placed by tapestry, they're placed by us. So if we're saying we need an extra lifeguard, that's on us, not the tapestry. And it's.
Well, if it's the tapestry, if the tapestry program doesn't come, then we don't need that extra lifeguard, correct?
Well, we hope, that's going to be all figured out beforehand. Like if tapestry is going to be up there, then we'll know ahead of time soon. The whole playing piece, tapestry will be part of it. If tapestry says I don't have a program this year, then we don't need that extra lifeguard.
And, and where?
Right, so we'll know that then. But if tapestry says, no, we want to come this year, then we'll hire another lifeguard.
And pay for it?
Yeah.
Why? Why doesn't the school pay for it? It's their program.
Because they're our kids and it's, they're basically in a program that they've always gone there and participated. It's never been a question before.
If the children go to tapestry and during tapestry time, they're going to go to the pool, say for two hours. does staff from Tapestry that would normally watch them at Tapestry go with them and accompany them?
Yeah.
And they stay there?
In theory, they stay there.
I mean, I know they're not lifeguards, and they're not medics, they're Tapestry staff. So they're there to try to help the children stay in line and follow the rules and not get in a dangerous situation.
Right.
Okay, so I feel better about that, I mean, it's extra adults watching over the children.
How does that work?
For Tapestry, or?
As far as you, I lost that one of them.
Well, then monitoring their, their own children.
Can, when you speak, could you speak up a little more? I think your mask is muffling you.
I don't, I don't know if speak, it did not go well last year, and that's why, after we had been there first day, I had to speak to Stan about rules not being followed, and, you know, safety concerns because of that. We were short-staffed, we were, we only had four lifeguards, only two of them were there every day. And, so, there's so much information, but I don't feel it's necessary to say it in a public setting like this.
Did you feel overrun?
I, we did, very much so, and after the first day, when they were there, I spoke to our lifeguards, because I felt stressed, I could tell they felt stressed, and there was a lot of discussion about it, about our concerns to Stan, and said, how can we, how can we resolve this, how can we make this work? It was never, we don't want them here, it was never that, I know that there's some dialogue around that. However, at that time, Stan suggested that maybe we just can't manage them this year because they are short-staffed and we are short-staffed, and they also had the largest group to date that they've ever had. So that's something, we were also all, just, can I just mention something?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So that is something to take into consideration as well. So instead of saying, no, we're not doing this, I decided, okay, I really would like to try this another day. Let's see how this goes. The second day, there were a lot more issues that came up that led to even larger safety concerns. And so I brought those issues back to Stan, and we discussed them, and he made the decision with my support that it was not a safe situation to have them last year because of the short-staffed issues. And the fact that every single lifeguard that was new, it was first year for all of them, first year certified. Going into next year, when we discuss this further in the spring, I would like to get into more and discuss why we are, I am requesting a number of days I'm requesting.
A number of what?
Days I'm requesting.
I still didn't hear her.
Days to be opened.
Okay. Sure.
Can I suggest that, I mean, I've been here for several meetings, and I've heard of back and forth on this pool issue, and it sounds like it, it's not something that, I mean, it could resolve itself, but it sounds like it's something that possibly you might want to have the parties come in, maybe in a private session, maybe in a open session, but where you could have something worked out with the parties, and maybe select a word or something to arbitrate some type of agreement to where everybody feels good about what's going on, it just feels like there's a lot of negativity that's not being resolved around this issue.
Well, what I was actually going to suggest is maybe someone from Parks and Rec and Michael and Angela, meet with somebody from Tapestry and have them go over, but what we want it to.
I definitely think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We tried reaching out to Tapestry, but we haven't gotten anything back as to what. There's good, we might look like it, so, we don't know. And that way, it was just you, Parks and Rec, it would be enough.
All right, so tonight, we're here just to approve the budget, and then we, it won't get, all this will get, I don't know, once more closer to the season, so. So is everybody okay with the budget changes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Membership dues.
Okay, this was during the latter half of our meeting, so we were all a bit gassed at that point. So trying to figure it out, I didn't think it was going to happen then, but I've got the information from Lyle, and this has to do with special appropriations, just jogging your memory. So, I'm going to say a bunch of things here that you already know, but I'm going to, I do that a lot, I'm not going to say it anyway. So Rutland Regional Chamber of Commerce, also known as the RRCC, merged with the Rutland Economic Development Corporation, known as the REDC, to form the Chamber of Economic Development of the Rutland region, also known as CEDRR, also known as Cedar. In the past, what Proctor did was they paid a membership to the RRCC for three hundred and sixty dollars, and that's reflected in past budgets, that's where it turns out it's confusing us. So that's three sixty that we were paying, and then we were paying another five hundred to the REDC. So just for our partnership with what is now Cedar, we were paying eight hundred and sixty dollars. When they merged, it got condensed into five hundred dollars, and that is reflected in the budget. The last time I checked, I thought it was. Let me pull it up and make sure. Yes.
Yeah, what page is that on?
That is called, but it's still in here, I haven't changed.
It's on the Reddit still.
Yeah, I haven't changed it under, as a line item yet, because I'm scared to do that stuff in, in.
Department of Labor.
Yeah, Department of Labor. I don't, I'm not allowed to add or subtract line items, so I just haven't changed it yet. That will, the number won't change, but it will be called Cedar. And then, we only pay, Lyle came here two or three meetings ago to pitch the Real Rutland campaign, and that is what we pay the one dollar per person to fund.
Sixteen hundred dollars, was it?
Yeah, yes.
So we need to take the seventeen forty-one half of the budget.
So, well, that, so the sixteen forty, I think the actual cost is going to be seventeen forty-one.
Okay.
Because sixteen forty is, I think, was offered a different census. So I think the actual cost is going to be seventeen forty-one.
Okay.
So, so sixteen forty, as you see, that's in the, that's the negative, that was taken out, and seventeen forty-one was added to its proper place under the Rutland County Marketing. I might also change that to say Real Rutland campaign.
Okay, so the seventeen forty-one will go under Rutland County Marketing, and then the Chamber in Economic Development that is zeroed out will now be five hundred, and the Rutland Economic Development Corps is going to be zeroed out.
So, no changes are going to be happening here at all, what it is, is what it is. So the five hundred.
Is going away?
No, that five hundred for the, for the Rutland Economic Development Corps is Cedar.
Right, so it needs to move down to where you have Chamber of Economic Development.
Yes. And then, yeah.
Got it. Sorry, I'm a stickler.
Oh, it's okay.
We wouldn't expect it anyways.
All right. Clearing what?
How does that affect the bottom?
It does.
Okay.
Just the names change.
Talk too many.
Way too many.
All right, update, property coverage and workers' comp for the week.
And, yeah, and that was the last, so, it, those costs actually went down, but I don't know what happened in FY twenty-two, it was underbudgeted. And sometimes Stan created these budgets without having the facts, I did the first time, this stuff didn't come to me until last week. So, they, so we kind of had to do a double boost here, we had to, some of them went up, like Parks and Rec, because we had to counter fencing and lights down there now.
Right.
And they also went up because they were budgeted too low last year, so, so that kind of, if it would have stayed the same, if I hadn't changed the numbers, then we would have a bit more money to play around with, a few thousand, but, like I said, unfortunately, it did, it did rise our expenditures, our budget expenditures.
Did we put up new fences down there?
It doesn't make any difference, they never accounted it before, and this year, they requested, they sent an email before Stan left, we had to measure how much fence was down there, how many of the actual buildings, the square footage, all those things, the I S and that, all of that.
Yeah, we're going to do it for the water treatment.
Yeah, everything.
Yeah. I think they were, okay.
And, you know, I can think of what a pain that would be for a bigger municipality. You just add a few fences here and there.
Yeah.
You can go around, yes, it goes for you.
Oh, you just measured it like that?
Yeah.
Over the line, okay.
Because it measures it itself. How do you measure?
John?
Take measure. We won't tell John.
So is there any questions on that, anybody?
Except to say that a thousand eighty and thirty-two dollar increase in the budget size is fantastic.
Say again, one thousand?
The, the whole budget, the total increase is three thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and three cents.
Okay.
For the whole, that is one.
Yeah.
And that's.
That's pretty clever.
It's amazing. With the cost, you know, fuel going up and wages and insurance, I think, nice job, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, well, let's see how it plays out.
Yeah.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Town report votes. Town three votes.
Second one, we'll notice.
Has, has the assessor come in yet?
She is not.
She's not scheduled until seven, so.
Anybody have questions, or? How many households do you have?
I don't know.
I think it's around seven fifty, maybe.
That number does sound familiar to me, in the seven fifty range.
I just wonder why we go high with printing. I'd like one for a house.
Let's not send one out to everybody.
That would need to be approved at town meeting.
That's not going to happen.
Why do?
We, well, we voted that last year, I think.
Yeah, but it's, you know, why can't we do it?
I would say you can go up to print seven hundred for seven fifty.
I think after a year of it under my belt, I'll have a little bit more knowledge and be able to help out in this conversation.
And actually, see how many.
This is the first year we.
Yeah, see how many extra we ends up with sitting in a box, or boxes, and.
I saw the City of Rutland's annual report, which I really liked, but they don't have to put the audit in there, so I did check with the town clerk, and she said that we are required, but the audit in ours.
Yeah.
So.
Why they act and we act?
Good question.
Are they restricted, you pretty much put whatever you want in your annual report?
I thought maybe it had to do something, whether we were chartering town or not, I wasn't sure, so.
Yeah, I think there was some, whether it came up at town meeting, or.
If we do, if we put an audit in our, it's like a one-page audit report, you know, like something.
Yeah, we passed, we thrilled, you know?
Yeah.
Most, that's all I look at.
But it could be that that's part of Rutland charter, you know?
We've done it here before, Ward stood up at town meeting and said, where's that audit?
Warm call.
Doesn't mean it's needed.
Right, because it wasn't, that's what.
I've never heard of this, I don't think RC, Rashad, you guys have.
Seeley did say that we worked with them once.
Okay, I was going to ask you if you had, did she like them?
She did, her advice was that we stick with who we've been with.
This year?
This year, since we've been working with Repro, just because I have a really good idea of what our expectations are, but, like, but, she did follow up with, we had worked with that other company before, they've done a good job.
Yeah.
I'm surprised it's still, your rating is so high.
Well, maybe they're busy and.
Maybe because yours is such a.
Like twice as much?
I can't even find it. I know, it was, I can access completely.
So, does anybody have, you want to just stay with Repro for this year?
Let's stay with Repro, but Michael, let's track how many we get returned, and can you also, I don't know if the league would know or what, but let's find out for sure whether or not we have to put the audit in there, because that would be a huge, huge savings.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Let's not deliver them door-to-door this year, let's, let people pick them up here.
I spoke to Lisa about that a little bit, too. We don't think we're going to do door-to-door this year, right?
No, I think people do.
You don't think we are?
That I'm going to do it, no, I don't have a senior class that I am corralling.
So the option's out, anyway, I think.
So you have to mail them?
Yeah, we're going to, we'd have a little party.
Why can't you just have them in at voting, or, well, they need them.
Because you have to have them before voting.
Well, I mean, like, at town hall, like here?
Yeah, just leave them here.
We don't mail them to the city.
Don't pay them to mail them.
Won't they come and get?
Rutland doesn't mail them?
No, never have, or.
I, so Ben, I need to know two things, I need to ask two things, do we really need an audit?
Yep, and how many extra do we end up with after all said and done, so we can see if we can cut a hundred out?
Yeah, what's our mailing cost?
It costs four hundred and ninety dollars to mail them.
And they have to go to Rutland, correct?
I don't know, we had the conversation last year at town meeting, and it costs essentially the same to put the ads in the Rutland Herald if we don't mail them, as it does to mail them. That was Stan at town meeting.
Why, what ad would we put in the Rutland Herald?
Because we didn't have them available in time, and because if we weren't mailing them, Stan put the.
Warrant, right?
Warning, warning, yeah, the last page that lists all the articles.
It still has to be a warrant meeting.
And that is something I followed up, the warnings, and this is just from my conversation with the clerk, and I didn't do like an investigation into it, you know, but the warnings have to be in the report, so. And I'd seen where they were in the Herald one time.
More than one time.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they're here on time, and we have them at town hall, people just don't get, we don't have to do anything.
Exactly.
No ads, no, you know, nothing.
But I think what Stan was saying is that we still have to warrant, so it's still have to go in the Herald.
And you put it on the website, too, right?
Right, exactly, we've got a website.
You could totally put it on the website, we probably would end, I don't know how long.
You can't, you can't.
But we probably would end up having to print less, because I'm sure not every single person is going to come to the town.
Exactly.
To say.
Right.
What was the question asked last year that was town meeting?
I'm pretty sure it was.
Shall we mail reports?
And it was defeated.
Yeah, I think we need to maybe look at that.
We, we got to get out of the horse and buggy days here, folks, we got to move on and, you know, try and say.
But I'm just saying, I'm pretty sure that was the essence of the question, I mean, we can pull the town report, you can look at it.
Yeah, how many people show up and voted on that, you know?
Well, actually, last year, nobody did, it must have been the year before, because last year.
That's right, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
There were a lot of people there.
No, last year was a virtual.
And was that the Chitting and Watershed year?
Yes.
Yeah, so there was a ton of people there.
Right.
Normally.
Comment or question?
Yeah, I just think you are putting yourself at risk at angering the peasants by not sending them out. I think if you're going to pay you ten thousand dollars or whatever for a door downstairs or whatever, I think that it'd probably be a good idea to suspend the four hundred some dollars and have them mailed out, even if people don't look at them or something, I think that they do just appreciate it some. I think that they do just appreciate it somehow, that, like, this is coming out to them, and it's something, like, they can expect, and whatever, I think if you, I just think that you're, at this time of year, reelection and everything, I just think that, and, and the town meeting coming up, it would just be better, it would create less friction if you sent them out, I would think, I would think, I would think people would wanna get them.
I just think about the old, you just can't make it in, you know, there's probably lots of people.
I think that came up, I think that might have been that, like, something that was said at that town meeting about the elderly people that live in town that aren't able to come here and work here. I'm the same, I don't, I don't look at.
Do we wanna look at the motion, uh, go back in the records and look at the motion, and?
Well, just pull the town report, and we have a town report in Michael's office.
Yeah, we should have.
We don't have to make a decision on mailing today.
No, no.
Just need to get, get a printer.
Yeah, we need to get a printer, that's the point right now.
But you need to know when you print it, if you're printing the address on it, and you're printing the permit on it to mail, that's the part.
That could be why these are so much higher, if they're asking for an address on these?
No, it said, it says postal customer.
Yeah.
That's all it said.
Oh, you can do this, okay.
It says postal customer, and then it asks for permit.
Right, okay.
It says on the top, it doesn't have, they used to have individual.
Yeah, I remember those.
But we have another one.
This is really different.
Well, it could be there.
No.
I have, I, I have, I have.
I got the city of Rutland.
Okay, so let's just, let's just pick a contract and move on, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just say, we could go with Repro, then Celia comes and votes that, and she, like, I said, if we do a two-year contract, it's only a hundred dollars more than the lowest bid.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept Repro's, uh, bid for a two-year contract.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Then we can decide if we want eight fifty five.
So you're doing it for two years, you said, Ben?
Yeah, it saves us some money.
Yeah.
And I'd love to work with you on, on, on getting this to where we want it, you know, sort of making some of the changes that you're talking about, so I think we can get there.
All right, uh, we already went over the Rutland County solid waste.
Uh, the only thing that's different there is that you actually have a, um, uh, a, a letter of.
They want a letter of support.
Yeah, okay.
So, and that's just for a grant that they're applying for, so they can get information out on pollution control and everything that's used.
Need a motion for that?
I don't think you do.
All right, Lister's contract for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you.
Does everyone here, did everyone here get the corrected contract and updated?
Yes.
So, I, I think the confusion, well, you tell me where the confusion, uh, was, but, uh, I know Bruce and Tom will probably remember when I originally came in and, and, um, bid to do this job. I gave you an option A and an option B, and option A was just myself, I would do all of the work, and then option B was to have a, an assistant assessor or an assessor clerk who would do some of the work at a rate of pay significantly less than mine, thereby saving the town some money. And I think that arrangement worked, uh, really well, I'm really quite sad to have lost my workson, Jake, to, uh, the city of Burlington, um, and it's, it's really become a problem statewide, there are young people coming into this profession, so it, it might behoove the town thinking about it in the long run. I know you think maybe for a town the size of Proctor, you don't need two people to staff this office for this little bitty town, but on the other hand, it gives you backup, you know? There's, um, you know, I may get to retire somewhere on the somewhat, uh, you know, soon horizon, but, um, there's gonna be nobody to replace me. So, for the moment, I do have a proposal to offer you, um, the woman who's been working as my assistant assessor in Pollock. Um, Pollock also has Provel, I was recruited by Pollock about the same time I was recruited by Proctor, because they were similarly desperate when Jim Boyle passed away, and there was no buggy in the wings to replace him, so, um, anyway, bottom line is, if, if you hired Karen, um, she would be able to step right into the job without missing a week, really, because she's been using Provel all these years, she's been working with me, um, so I, I think that's, I mean, to me, the math is just a no-brainer with that, whereas the math works similarly to the way it did with, with Jake, only Karen is actually offering to work at a slightly lesser rate of pay than, than Jake was, was asking for. So, um, so that's, that's my proposal, and, you know, you can call it option A and option B, but I don't know why the town wouldn't, uh, save, uh, you know, save a few grand every year and have another person kind of as a backup, you know? Say I got sick, or, you know, got a concussion or something, you, you, you have a backup for somebody else to, um, to be able to answer questions for that office, so I, I think it's a good thing to have a little redundancy that way.
I think that's a good way to do it, to save a few bucks and.
I'm just questioning, um, the math under the, um, where you have the part, the total days.
Right, so I did revise that from the earlier contract, you have the updated one, right?
I think, it shows two different figures, 10,005 and then 20,010.
Right, so those are actually, I have the 2017, uh, bid that, uh, that I put in, uh, when I first took the job here, and the numbers are actually pretty similar, um, the math still works kind of the same way, if you can replace half of my hours with someone who works for half of my pay rate or less, that saves the town money. So, um, it's a similar scenario, so if I don't have an assistant, it's gonna mean more hours for me. So that's what the, the double the, not quite double the hours, I think I figured.
So with an assistant, is 20,010?
That's my estimate.
And without is 10,005?
No, if with the assistant, it's 20,010, without the assistant, it's 20,010, if a suitable assistant cannot be found, it's 20,010, if it's with an assistant, it's 10,005.
And that covers you and the assistant? Or that's just yours?
No, so my math for what Karen is available to offer, she's offering one six-hour day, she's traveling from Pollock area, so, um, one six-hour day, twice a month, at 26 an hour, and I boosted that to, if we assume 30, because she's gonna be a town employee, unlike myself, so you'll pay taxes, I don't know how much that adds for, for $10, but, um, even if we set it at, say, 32 an hour, if that's what it really costs you, you'd be paying into taxes for her, um, that would be 46.08 for the year, so it's cutting that additional 10,000 and a half.
Fifty four, a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the 10,005 for you and the 46 less for her, correct?
Yes, and those, those are pretty close to actual numbers for the last, the last couple of years, so, um, we, we try to work fairly, fairly mean, uh, you know, I, I mean, I have to say, there, there is, there's an economy of scale you get for a bigger municipality, because there's some of the same bureaucratic things, like checking the homesteads every week during the season, that, you know, just takes that amount of time, whether you're a town of 700 parcels or 2,000 parcels.
Um, I'm not crazy about putting on another town employee, I mean, it's 46 and change, you said, but then we've got, you know, some vacation, some, uh, insurance, uh.
I wasn't assuming you would pay any benefits, you never paid benefits to Jake, he was, he was a part-time contract employee.
Right.
Um, Karen is just, she's never done that, and she's not really interested in it, she'd rather have the tally, got taxes, but as a part-time employee, you, you wouldn't have to pay, I think unemployment insurance, you have to pay no matter how few hours somebody's working, but the other benefits, I don't believe you're obligated to pay.
Yeah, I know.
At, at that rate.
Well, I'm just feeling.
Depends on, uh, Rutland's comp, I don't, I don't think we get that as a Lister in West Rutland.
And if you think about our paycheck, it's the same idea, because it's.
Yeah.
Technically, we're town employees, and all we pay is FICA.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, can I, I'm sorry, okay, um, I, this, I, would you redo this contract, because I feel like it doesn't, I can't, I can't read this and figure, you know, like.
So, well, that.
Like, detail in here, this is.
Well, I can write it down, so that's the way we're going to, uh, uh, agree on it, um, I, I don't know, I mean, how do you, how do you want me to word it, I mean, I can say, this is what we're proposing, um, you know, I do have other items in the contract, we can, we can strike the 20,000 if that's confusing, it, but it, it does say right there, estimated hours if a suitable assessor clerk cannot be found, you know? If Karen's found some other job and she doesn't take this, I don't have anybody else to offer you, there, there just is, nobody wanting to be the tax lady or tax man.
Okay, so on the, on the page two of the contract, four days a month, average three hours a day, is that for the assistant, or what is, is that, if we're just cutting back to?
That's, that's the hours that I would work if I had an assistant to do some of the work.
Okay.
It's kind of an average for the year, there's typically a lot more hours that we have to put in during Lister's grievance, you know, for that April 1st deadline, when we're looking at, uh, new construction, you know, sheds and garages and all of that, but, um, Karen, like Jake, has been able to do, uh, a lot of that work for me, and there's no reason you need to pay me at my rate of pay to measure a shed, you know?
Yeah.
I can train somebody to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I would just, and I don't know if you guys agree, I would like to see the contract, basically, if we do enter it to, for the lesser amount, and then you as, um, the Lister, your hourly rate, your hours and what they are, and then your assistant or the clerk, and what their hours are, and what they're.
Well, that's not my contract, though, see, I'm a contract employee, Judy, so that's the difference, so.
Right.
So I can do that in a separate document for your budget purposes, of what you're budgeting, but I'd like to have signed in my contract what I'm agreeing to do for the town, because I'm a contract employee, maybe hourly, I pay all my own insurance and all of that.
Right, and then you go out and hire her, or?
No, no, she'd be, in this case, she'd be a town employee, and in the case of Jake, he had his own contract with the town.
That's why I asked about the insurance, another employee.
Yeah, but we, I don't believe there's anything other than.
Why couldn't we contract with somebody instead of hire him as an employee?
Some people don't like to do it, because they have to provide their own insurance, because he's saying there's nobody but him in the area right now.
Yeah, there's nobody to do it.
I thought we weren't obligated to pay insurance if she was a part-time employee.
Not health insurance.
Okay.
No.
Then why can't she be a 1099, a subcontractor?
Actually, I might get that.
You could offer that, she might want a different rate of pay, I certainly would, if I had to do the taxes myself and figuring that out, I'll, trust me, it's a, it's, it's not, it's not a task that I excel at, running my own business, but it's something I have to do. You know, I have to pay every month, I have to send a, send a payment to the IRS, and I have to calculate all of those payroll taxes, and that's what Karen just doesn't wanna deal with, she's never dealt with it, she doesn't want to start now.
Sure.
Okay, so this person would just work how many hours a week, or a month?
She's talking about because it's a little bit of travel time, uh, coming in twice a month is what she can offer, twice a month for a six-hour day, um.
Yeah.
On each of those days, to make it worth the drive, she's not asking for travel time.
Yeah.
I think it's a pretty generous offer on her part, quite frankly, I'd want more to travel from Pollock to Proctor, I'd, I'd wanna figure that in.
Yeah.
I'm happy with that.
Yes.
I mean, ultimately, we're saving money from what we've been doing, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we're saving a little bit of money, and, and we're keeping the same status quo, pretty much, so.
So do you want me to?
Take care of everything, yes.
Do you want me to edit this contract and resubmit it to you, or are you okay with this, and I can do another document explaining that with the budget?
I'd rather, so what, I'd rather see a contract of what we're contracting you for, so if we're contracting you for the 10,000 something, that's what we're contracting you for.
But you're also contracting, if something happens with the assessor clerk, or other work is required, you know, that, that you.
Oh, no, that would be separate, that would be a separate.
Right, right, I mean, the, the hours for Proctor have been pretty consistent, but I can't always promise that, you know?
No.
I mean, it was a little bit of a, a, a shift when we were all shut down with COVID, and I was able to get, logging in on the computer, be able to work from home and do a lot of that, but I couldn't figure out how to have both of us dialing into a computer, so that, that, you know, we just, you know.
Are you guys okay with, like, having your contract just speak to her, what she's looking for hours, what you think, so?
Yeah, it's not, to me, it's not much different than what we had, yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying, if, like, down the road, you'd look at this, and you would know if we had another person, we had to, I want something that shows this is what we have her for.
Well, she's gonna be a town employee, yeah.
The other person.
Yes.
Right.
I think what Judy's saying is, to have the contract reflected.
I'd like to have it in my contract the way it is, but could I suggest, I'll do an additional document for your budget purposes, to explain how that's gonna work with Karen, would that clarify it for you? What you're really signing, my one, with my contract, is my, my contractual rate, I have right in the contract that I'll bill you on a monthly basis, based on the number of hours I actually submit, so, unlike other contractors, some do do a flat fee, that you're gonna pay me $10,000 no matter what, the way I structure my contracts, my sister tells me I'm foolish, but the way I do it is, if I work an hour, I get paid for an hour. So if I only end up working, you know, what amounts to $8,000, that's all I'm gonna bill the town for.
Get billed.
You know, if it's significantly over than that, over that, if something starts to change, and it looks like I'm gonna have to build the town for more than that, I'd certainly come to you, you know, let you know. But so far, so good, I've been doing this for four years, and it really hasn't changed, not gonna what?
Okay, I think what she's saying is that she wants the contract to show what she's doing and getting paid for, and to know that she has an assistant, but what Judy would like, and I can see this, something more clear about the part-timer, she's not really part of your contract, she's as a town employee, there is a separation there.
That's basically what she's doing, she has that, if there's an assistant, it's gonna be 10,500.
No, I understand that, but it's not, it's not a separate issue, it's all running together on this one document, so maybe having two documents makes it more clear.
I give, write up a short letter just explaining what I'm proposing for hiring a, a part-time assistant, you know, I mean, that's, that's the offer we have on the table right now, the reason I, I don't want that in my contract is, that's the offer we have on the table right now, if that offer evaporates, and we can't find anybody, it's going to be a different scenario.
Yeah.
I mean, the town would certainly have the option of, you know, hosting a job for an assessor clerk, and, you know, maybe you'd find someone in town who wanted to run the business, and maybe you'd consider doing that, but I would say why we bring that to you at such a point that we might need that.
I don't know, I, I think this is, is clear.
If Judy's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
I just don't know why I'm having such a, I think, I think it's, um, it's just, I'm used to a contract being, this is, this is my rate, these are the expected hours, and this is what I'm doing, and I feel like there's all these scenarios, and then this other person is separate from you, um, doesn't happen to be named in here, because we're assuming we're paying you X if we go and hire an assistant clerk, and.
if we go and hire an assistant clerk and help have them support you. So that's a whole nother, that's just an employment contract of that.
I don't know how else to make it clear. I can strike the $20,000 out of there and just say, if there isn't an assessor clerk, it's going to cost you more money, and I don't know how much more money it's going to cost you. To me, I think this is more, it, it's more complete, and it gives you the whole story.
I think it's fine if you, this is your rate, if you have, if we go on hire an assistant clerk, this is what we're going to end up paying you if we, we can't get that person. Right? Isn't that exactly what you're saying?
Those are the estimate of my hours. All you are agreeing to pay me is my hourly rate.
Right.
And the, of the numbers are an estimate, as it says in the contract, for your budgeting purposes.
Okay.
I will bill you on a monthly basis. I'm not saying I'm going to absolutely bill you for $10,000. If I don't need to put in $10,000 for the work, you won't be billed for that much.
Okay.
Again, my sister says I'm crazy. I don't put that in there.
I just maybe clarify what you're, I mean, I don't understand, this sounds disjointed. I know that you know how everything's going to work, but it just sounds like there's a person over here who's going to come in for six hours. It seems like maybe what she wants and what I would understand more of what's going on. If there was some type of plan that you could write out of what your responsibilities are going to be under your hours, and then what this person is going to come in and do under their six hours.
It's in there.
Okay.
It is, it is in there, actually, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's based on another document that I gave to the board, which does outline all of the tasks of being a lister or assessor in this case. Because the town of Proctor voted out listers, so technically, neither of us are listers anymore. Listers are elected officials.
Yeah.
Okay, I find serves the motion to approve this as is.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um...
Just an additional clarification. Do you want to make a motion to hire Karen or to authorize Michael to interview her and, and make that plan? Because that's not part of my contract. Again, she's going to have her own employee, whatever, rich contractor sign up with the town.
Is there a motion to allow Michael to go and contact Karen?
I think I'd probably ask Celia to join me as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It wasn't my choice of literature, but I learned a lot from the fact that it's in.
Oh, fun reading, right?
Is that first person?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to go into executive session? Or did my financial attorney claim communication made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.